The race is about to begin now that Massachusetts voters have okayed a casino for Springfield, Mass. The Mohegan says they want to expand it in northern Connecticut to protect their flank and Connecticut jobs and tax revenue.
Two political correspondent, Mark Davis, has those details.
It's trouble for them, but it's also trouble for the state because the state gets 25% of the slot machine revenue off the top every month.
We'll start this as rapidly as we can. Ideally, we have something up and running before a casino is built and running in Massachusetts.
To north of Hartford, like the existing off-track betting facility near the airport at Windsor Locks.
Purpose tonight is to solicit comments on what the town government should be negotiating for if and when a casino does come to the town of Windsor Locks. There's some ground rules. Please use the microphone and state your name and address. Please leave your comments in three minutes. All comments should address and be relevant to the purpose of this public hearing, and please try to stay on point. Any questions? Since I say none, I'll turn it over to First-Elected Curvet with his presentation.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you for being a service moderator for this evening. I want to explain the current law. Under the current Connecticut law, it's illegal to operate a casino outside of the National Kentucky Pequod or Mohegan Plaza Reservoir. It's against the law. It's even illegal to discuss it. So that's why in the last legislative session, the Connecticut Legislature passed a law that sets out a scenario that could lead to a legal casino being established at one site outside of the reservations. For that to happen, there's a lengthy process which must first unfold, and each step of that process must be satisfied. Step one, a joint venture must be formed by the two tribal nations. That step has been accomplished. The National Kentucky Pequod and the Mohegans have formed a joint venture. It's known as MMCT Venture LLC. So step one has been accomplished. Step two is RFP, Request Four Proposals. Once formed, the tribal business end venture may issue a request for proposals from municipalities regarding the possible establishment of a gaming facility in that town. This step was completed. The request for proposals was issued on October 1st of this year. The third step is generally developers would come forth to express interest in establishing a casino in a particular town. A town could theoretically act as a developer as well. That also has happened because the Connecticut Airport Authority and Sport Tech Ventures have submitted proposals, and Windsor Locks has decided that we would also consider other sites that may emerge at any time during the course of negotiations if they make sense. That's unlikely to happen, but we wanted to keep that opportunity open. Sport Tech Ventures, by the way, is the operator of where the off-track betting is, also Bobby D's Restaurant. Step four, the town has to endorse these proposals. And when I use the word endorse, I use it in terms of like to sign endorse it back with a check. Basically, the town must say, yes, we agree to take these proposals that have been submitted. We endorse those so that we can take it to the next level, which is to begin negotiations. So the Board of Selectment has endorsed the proposals, all of the proposals, the two submitted, as well as the third idea of some other location, so that we can legally enter into negotiations and to flesh out the details, to learn about the potential benefits and the detriments for the town. I emphasize that word legally because you remember, you clearly can't legally even discuss forming a casino anywhere outside of the reservations unless we went down this narrow path that was laid out by the legislature. So we have done that so that we can now legally enter into discussions. Development Agreement. The goal of, or the end game of the negotiations would be the entry into of a development agreement. A development agreement is the terms under which a casino would be established in a particular town. At this point, there's been no significant negotiations with any of the parties, other than to meet them, say hi, and look forward to speaking with you down the road. If negotiations do progress to satisfaction of all the parties, where we actually get to the point where we're all on the same page and we say, yes, I think there's an agreement that can happen here, then the result, that is what's called a development agreement. And we're not quite anywhere near close to the end. I get it in my presentation we are, but the rest of it isn't. Windsor Locks has thickened the lot, so to speak, because we've added our own self-composed steps to approve them. Because this is a decision that the collective wisdom of the town is much more important on than the collective wisdom of three members of the Board of Selectment, even though there's a substantial collective wisdom sitting over to my right. We want the town to be involved in this. That's a big decision, and the town needs to be involved in it. So basically, we've determined and voted as a board that the Board of Selectment will not enter through any proposed development agreement until the following three prerequisites are met. One, a public hearing must be held to hear from the citizens of Windsor Locks regarding those items that we should establish as goals of the negotiation. That's tonight. That's the purpose of why we're here tonight, is the first problem of those three steps. It's to hear ideas about what the goals that we should establish of the negotiation. The next is if the negotiations result in a proposed development agreement that the majority of the Board of Selectment agreed to, then that agreement will not be executed by the Board until a town meeting is held so that the citizens of Windsor Locks may be heard regarding that agreement. And that town meeting will automatically adjourn to a referendum. So of these two parts, the first part is tonight, we're looking for input. We're looking for people to say, look, if you're going to enter into these negotiations, these are the things that you should be looking out for. These are the issues that you should try and negotiate for, for the benefit of the town. And that's where we really are seeking your help tonight, to tell us what you think are the important issues that we should be looking for. If and only if we get to a point where we think there's a development agreement on the table that is worth pursuing, will it come to the next level, to the next town meeting. If we don't get that far, we don't even get to a town meeting. And then at that town meeting, you'll be talking about a specific proposal that will be before the town meeting. And then your comments can run the gamut from, we think this proposal is excellent, and we're so happy that the Board of Selectment negotiated it for us. Or we think casinos in general are a bad idea. We think this agreement in general is a bad idea. You can run the whole gamut. All of those issues are appropriate, and would need to be discussed at a town meeting if we get that far. And then lastly, as I mentioned, the meeting will be adjourned to a referendum, so the towns and citizens of Windsor Locks will actually get the vote on the ultimate issue. Town meetings are nice because you can express your opinion, but not everyone is available to be there and vote. So if you combine a town meeting with a referendum, you really have the best of both of them. The opportunity to express yourselves on a public forum, as well as the opportunity in a referendum to vote on the ultimate issue. So those are the three steps that we have imposed on the process because we think it's important to do so. Step number seven, back to the legislative steps. If all parties reach a development agreement, that still does not mean a casino will happen because the agreement then has to go back to the Connecticut Legislature and the governor. Because remember, casinos are still legal outside of the reservations. So if we go up to the point where we have a development agreement signed off on by all the parties with the consent of the townspeople, then the whole package goes back to the Connecticut Legislature, and they'd have to pass a law to change the current law to allow a third casino. And of course, that'd have to be signed off on by the governor. Legal challenges. It's inevitable, given the amount of money involved in this project, that this will sail through without legal challenges. So I've included that as an additional step because it seems to me that no matter what happens, if it gets that far, there will be legal challenges to the law, and we'll have to wait and see how those, you know, turn out before we go any further. I'm not going to speak specifically about the proposal because I know almost nothing about the proposal. I even hesitate to call it a proposal. It's a concept at this point. That's all it is. And because we can't enter into negotiations until now, we don't know the full extent of the proposal. There may not even be a full extent of the proposal at this time. We may have to hash that out. But we do know that some general parameters that have been announced by the casino is that there's a, the scope of the product supposedly entails 150,000 square foot feet of gaming plus a 50,000 square foot of restaurant and entertainment space. They're suggesting that an additional 50,000 square feet of post-security gaming space will be included. So once you pass security, there'd be a facility inside the security zone. There's an estimated that there'll be 10,000 daily players. There is estimated that there'll be 1,490 direct construction jobs, that there'll be 2,871 direct permanent jobs.
Mr. Curvet?
Sure, yes, sir.
I question whether or not we should get into these kinds of details when the fact of the matter is, we don't have a proposal. So tonight, we seem to be discussing primarily the concept of whether or not Windsor Locks wants a casino. And you're talking specifics of a proposal that doesn't exist.
It's a good point, Judge Leary. I actually agree with you. I went back and forth as to whether I should even present what was the basic outline I presented, and I thought perhaps some of the people hadn't heard even that much of it. But I think you're right. The purpose is to solicit advice, so I'm willing to dispense with it for going any further on that.
Well, the issue is, if this gentleman can speak, I think it's a good point to bring up because it tells the people at Windsor Locks how many people are coming into our town per day.
Well, it's been up there. I think people saw it, and we can move on. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Curvet. I was remiss before not introducing your Board of Selectment that's also appearing tonight. Michelle Hill, please. Melboni, our comp clerk, at the end, over here taking notes. Michelle Hill will act as my timer, I believe.
He did that to herself, either.
Moderator.
I just carried my passport over for the last speaker. That was pretty smart, right? All right, we're starting now with the public comment part of tonight's meeting. I'm Joe Calcena. I guess I assume. Anywhere that goes to stop and shop knows me. Please forgive me if I helped pronounce your names correctly. Gerald Stades? Gerald? Yes, sir. Would you please use the microphone over here? And next up will be Bill Leary, so I'll give you everybody a heads up as to which of that person is coming up.
My name is Gerard Stades. With the 69 Greenwood Road. I really question the process because I feel that we're all wasting a lot of time and energy if in fact the town does not want this. And we're not getting an opportunity to say whether we want it or we don't want it. So a lot of energy is going to be expended, but I guess we'll follow the process. I'd like to know, if we are going to have such a casino, what would the cost be to us as a town? And you say you don't know. What would the anticipated revenue be to us as a town? We don't know that. I mean, we are, what are we, 14 miles from Springfield? The venue in Springfield is going to be large. The venue in Springfield is probably going to have entertainment and all these other opportunities. And if I was a gambler, why wouldn't I want to go to Windsor Locks and go to a big venue? I assume that the payouts in Springfield would be better than the payouts in Windsor When we do a program like this, we talk about keeping jobs in Connecticut. Were there any agreements that said that everybody who's hired for the casino will have to live in Connecticut?
Do you think there will also be that agreement?
It's, well, I don't even want it, but if you did have it, that's one of the reasons supposedly that we're having this casino in an area. Can we legally make that kind of a requirement that in fact, everybody hired to work there would come from Connecticut? Because that's the premise, and we do things for even doing it.
I think that's the type of constructive request we're looking for tonight.
I'll just, I'll end with one comment, and that is that economists that have studied casino gambling around the entire country have said that wherever you have a new casino within five to 10 miles of that casino, the addiction rate to gambling goes up dramatically. Not only, it goes up dramatically. And that certainly will impact our town dramatically. And I guess I had one comment that you just talked about.
Yes, you did. Quite all right. Mr. Leary? Next is Robert Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is William Leary. I live at 60 Suppley Street, Windsor Locks, and I am a lifelong resident of Windsor Locks. I want to begin by commending the Board of Select. By the way, that's an activism, that term, "selectment." Our present board contains two women with very impressive resumes, so I think they ought to change the nomenclature and call them Board of Select Persons. That's...
Mr. Leary, anytime I refer to the male or female gender, I'm referring to both of them.
I know that, Mr. Moderator. And by the way, he should be no introduction. He's known to many of us as a great moderator. So again, I commend the board. I think this is an important step. I do think the discussion tonight ought to be limited to the concept of whether or not we, the participants in this meeting, want a casino in Windsor Locks. I'm gratified, as I look around the room, there's terrific attendance, and I'm particularly impressed by the number of young people who are here, especially Boy Scout through 263, or witnessing democracy in action. And I think that's very, very good for our young citizens, and it's good for all of us. I was in the legislature many, many years ago, represented Windsor Locks for three terms. This is back in the late 1960s and very early 1970s, so it's a bit of ancient history. But I was there when Connecticut entered into state-sponsored gambling, and I'm talking about the lottery. The legislature passed the lottery primarily to compete with neighboring states. For example, New Hampshire, I believe, although I'm not certain, was the first state in our northeast area to have a lottery. It was financially successful. So we saw what, leaving the legislature, although I voted against it, the legislature saw what was a gravy train supposedly, and approved the lottery. And there's no question it brought in significant revenue over the years. It also brought in significant problems, which I'm going to refer to in a minute. The next step in the process, we've heard it mentioned tonight, the tribes, the National Kentucky Pequods and the Mohegans, right? I get it mixed up. Received federal authority as independent nations, which they are, their reservations are independent of the United States to some extent, and they received recognition and they went ahead and built the two casinos, which we are familiar with. At that time, the state of Connecticut government entered into a deal with the tribes whereby the tribes would pay a certain percentage of their revenue, I believe was limited to slot machines, to the state of Connecticut. And that in the beginning was a significant amount of money. By the way, as I recall, I may be wrong, that money was used only for education. Needless to say, that has not been the case. That money, however, over the years has diminished greatly. It's now much less than it was. And one of the reasons for that is that the Northeast currently experiences a lot of casinos. If you look around the Northeast, beginning in Maine, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, New York, all of these states have vowed to build casinos, and they are obviously attracting their own local in-state gambling. As a result of that, the revenue in our two casinos has diminished precipitously. At this point, it represents approximately 30, it has dropped, that is, 38% from its peak. People who favor the concept of a casino say, well, it's still revenue, and it will produce jobs. Well, let's look at the record because the two casinos now existing have lost one-third of their jobs, and most of the remaining jobs are part-time jobs without benefits. So it is not the gravy train that we're all looking for. Casinos come with a lot of baggage. I wrote a letter to the editor that was published in the J.I. a couple of weeks ago. I mentioned some of the baggage, and this baggage goes with casinos, whiz, evictions, mortgage workers, spousal abuse, breakup of the families, neglect children, prostitution, loan sharking, debts, loss of jobs, petty crimes, including violent crime crimes. Statistics gear out that where you build a casino, these things will follow. In 2009, the state of Connecticut commissioned a survey of...
Three minutes, Judge.
I would ask for permission to continue for two more minutes.
Up to the moderator. It is up to the moderator, Judge, and I've got a long time, and I'm going to give you two minutes, but there's going to be an exception tonight.
I'll wrap up on a personal note. I mentioned I was in the legislature, but more importantly, I've served 37 years as a judge of property in Windsor Locks. I practiced law locally for 50 years. In the last few years, I've been the chairman of two statewide nonprofits that provide services to the addicted and to people suffering in mental health. I also sat on the board on the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, the Board of Advisory. I have witnessed, by the way, I also am in recovery, not from gambling, but from alcoholism. And I have 35 years of wonderful sobriety. So I have witnessed, I have witnessed the devastation of addiction, and studies show that gambling causes addiction, and casinos result in a significant increase in addicted gambling. We don't need it in Windsor Locks. Let's keep our margins safe and healthy. Thank you.
It would be genial with humanity if I ever thought I was going to be able to hold everybody for three minutes here tonight, but I'll try to make an exception if this is necessary, and I would ask everyone to stay on point if they're possible tonight. Next person up after Mr. Shea will be Peggy Sayers.
I won't take three minutes. I just know that some of the things I would like to see, if it goes through, I'm hoping it doesn't, but if it does, I'd like to see up on Route 75 sidewalks put in on both sides of the road, and probably not a little bit easier than possible. I'd also like, we have a wonderful park in town, the Riverwalk. It's used by very, very cute people. If you had ever walked along that trail, it's just about impossible to get down to the river and walk along the river, go fishing or anything. I'd like to see an area down there cleared out where people could go in and have piquets and things and walk along the river, make it more accessible to people. And I have to agree with Mr. Leary on everything he's said. All those bad things are what I have to, thank you.
So to summarize, you're looking for negotiations to improve the canal park. Thank you. After, thank you, Michael Bracken.
I appreciate that we have the opportunity to explore a proposal for a casino at the airport. I do not think it's fair to turn down a proposal without knowing how it will impact the town. For instance, will all equipment at the casino be taxed into the town? That would be a considerable amount of money put to allow the town to do much good with. We have an aging population in Windsor Locks as well. John F. Young has just started out, so keeping our problem tax stable is extremely important. The casino would produce jobs in two ways. First, construction jobs during building, and then casino jobs. Most of the casino jobs pay back for the fast food and other entry-level jobs. Part of our local economy depends on the job that helps the town with turnpike, the hotels and restaurants. The casino has the ability to support those businesses. Windsor Locks has had gambling at the airport since before the first casino was built, and it has not been a problem for the town. The airport is a perfect location, and it is not part of the town, and there is great access to the internet. I will tell you that it takes more funds than the lottery produces, and they produce a great deal of money, in fact, more money than casinos, to pay for our education, which is why the lottery doesn't just pay for education nowadays. And by the way, I believe the people of Windsor Locks have the right to hear the full proposal and ask questions and make informed decisions. I will tell you that Springfield is 10 miles down the road. We will have those problems that were identified as problems from Springfield. We will get enough of the funds to pay for problem gambling or any problems that we might have because they are going to the city of Springfield. Both of the tribes have always paid for their fair share of funds to pay for problem gambling and supported that treatment, and they will continue to do so. To me, it's much more problematic having that casino that is going to be 10 miles down the road. It will pull away from our hotels and our businesses here, if it hurt us if a lot of that phenomenon. I think it's important to help to do whatever we need to make sure that the city of Windsor Locks has a stable economy. Thank you.
Michael Bracken, next, and Ryan Page, next, after Mike.
I'd like to first say that during the presentation that Selecting Curvet gave, he came up on step number five, and he absolutely said "goal," and nowhere on step five slide did I see the word "goal." So I think that unfortunately, it slipped out, and I think that crushes your supporter of the casino. And I think that it's obvious. And the thing is, is that you're going into this already with your mind made up, in my opinion. When you can say "goal" and you're looking at the same slide that we are, and nowhere that I see "goal," and I don't think that anybody else here saw "goal," then I think that your mind is made up. The other thing is that you had said during one of the other slides that what we're here for is you're looking for a proposal from people here in town as to what you're looking for in order to present as ideas, in order to present to the other parties for introduction as town Windsor Locks wants this in order to enter into a proposal for you. Well, as Judge Leary said, and I support him wholeheartedly because I swear to God that man read my response to Ms. Sayers' questionnaire that she passed out, that what about the people that don't want it? We don't want to give you a proposal as to this is what we want. The slide that you showed of 10,000, and that's the reason that I wanted the figure, because I was wondering what that figure was, because during one of the other meetings, I had questioned the number of people that were going to be attending that casino during the day, and I had used stacks of figures from a 2005 meeting, and I came up with 12.5 million during the year, and I used those figures... five million during the year, and I used those figures from the 2005 figure that I had gotten from all casinos. And with that, I put four people in each car and came up with twelve million, five hundred and a hundred, anyways, it was twelve point five million cars in the Town Windsor Locks per year. And people can say that they've got the connector to the airport. Don't BS somebody that knows this town. They're not going to use the connector to the airport. They're going to get off of Route 75. They're going to commit to Windsor Locks. And even if they do use the connector, they're going to go into the airport, they drop off the people that they want. Eventually, that car is going to end up on 75 to be parked. They don't have the parking up there at the airport. We see that now. It's like we have valet services. And it's going to be a business. Somebody up there is going to develop, and maybe I'll have to invest in non-carry industries because I think that that's something that they should do is maybe a parking garage because they're going to need it if that casino goes in. But the thing is, is that the cars are eventually going to end up in Windsor Locks. As far as that many people at Terminal B, there's no way that anybody is going to be able to control that many people, that close to aircraft. When you look around the world today and you see everything that's going on with the terrorists, they put a soda bomb on a Soviet aircraft. They go to Paris and they shoot up all these venues because they couldn't get into a soccer game. But what they did is they ended up going to six other locations. And there's so much stuff going on nowadays with terrorists that even back in 9/11, we had an issue here at Bradley where supposedly there was a terrorist on the bomb that never got off the ground. It was airplane that got grounded after supposedly the FAA found out the other planes were being used as moving flying missiles. So the thing is, is how could anybody control that many people that are in a venue so close to aircraft? And one of the things that I didn't know is, and actually I did know, and the woman, the reporter from Channel 22 asked it during Mr. Warwick's meeting, is how are you going to deal with the security at the airport? How are you going to keep people that are flying safe? And the thing is, is that I haven't yet to see anybody, any newspaper reporter, any news, television news crew, anybody from the Town Windsor Locks. Hasn't anybody asked the state police what they think about controlling that many people? It's going to be their venue. They're the ones that are going to have to handle it. What is their take on this? But the thing is, is that how are they going to do it? There's no way. You know the manpower that's going to be required to handle that many people? And then...
Michael, you're about, you're about, you're about three minutes over. I'm going to ask you to... Okay, and... Thank you, Michael. Well, I'd like to remind everybody, I'd like to try to keep this on point. Right now, this is only a concept. This isn't reality yet. And you will have ample opportunity in the future to express your support or your non-support of this issue. You'll be able to do it on a voting booth or a voting machine or on paper ballot at Townwide Recreational. But tonight, the Board of Select is looking for input as to what they should negotiate for if and when this ever does come to fruition. So if we could try to stay on point, I know I've lost control again. I vote every time.
I wasn't wrong at all.
Well, we've got time for I and Michael. So anyways, the next person up is going to be Ryan Page. Did I got that correct? Page, Ryan?
Hi, my name is Ryan Page, Ninety Anthony Street. I'm an apprentice at O50, and I do support the casino being built at Bradley, not only for the jobs that could create for us and for the people of Windsor Locks, but for... But for the... It's time for change in Windsor Locks. I've been here for twenty-one years. It's a short time, but I've seen, I've seen little shops come and go downtown, and it's time for change. It's something that will hopefully stay here for a while, and I do support the casino.
Chiaboni, is it Chiaboni? Mike Houseman, for example. And then Margaret Byrne after Bob.
Hello? Chiaboni, 322 Reed Avenue. A little concerned about the possibility of the impact of local roads. What about maintenance and upkeep of local roads? Are we going to take care of that, the extra traffic? And if it's going to be at the airport, is that not state property, not town property? And what if any impact were lost or gained is the town going to have if it's on state property? I'm also concerned about if there's ten thousand gamblers coming in a day, what about the local police? Are they going to be overtaxed? What about a fire department? Who's going to take care of emergency services if anything happens in? What about liability to the town? Is there any liability for accidents, people falling and things like that? That's basically my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Margaret Byrne? Next is, is it Jill...
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. For a second, thank you for this opportunity. When I think about negotiating issues, I heard already come up, revenue, doing the best that we can to get revenue for our town. Infrastructure, I do agree with the gentleman who just spoke. I think Route 75 is very difficult. I guess we're busy probably between the airport and Route 20. So if there's some means of charling or meeting or something, and sidewalks also, both on Route 75 and Shore Posture Road, it's after the casino relocated. I also have questions about the impact on our emergency services, police, fire, and that, that it ends up with. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Jill? Next is Adam. Is it Rittinger? That's it.
Hi, I'm Jill Benashi. I'm not in favor of the casino.
Look closer, please.
I'm not in favor of the casino. I just know firsthand it can destroy families. I hope there's consideration to like younger people that are just starting to mature and go to the casino the one time they can see, and they think they can continue to go back and they lose it all. They lose their families, they lose their lives, they lose their jobs. People like yourselves have gone through the casino and lost it all. That's my, my concern is that we consider and think about Windsor Locks. I don't want it in my neighborhood. Thank you.
I really think your proposal is a concept of general pluck. If we enter into these negotiations, question out, do you think it would be beneficial to seek contributions toward treatment for addiction services as part of the negotiations? Does that make sense?
No, I just don't want to consume. I just think it's just a bad thing. It's still insecure. Prostitution, theft, there's so many bad things that come with it. Why bring it here? We have a nice town. Let's keep it that way.
Thank you. Adam is next. I'm having a hard time with the next name. Is it Johnny Delunder?
Can't read your writing. No, that's the next person.
My name is Adam Rittlinger. Reporting to Bun Dale, sir. I think one of the first things should be done is the projection of expenses that all this is going to cost. Police, roads, sidewalks, additional improvements to the soda plant, garbage collection and all that. All that should be considered. I don't know who is going to make all these projections because I myself think it's pretty hard. I think the town doesn't want just a building filled with sloths. I think something like a theater should be built with it. A lot of people go to the casino for the show, and you want an airhead and quite a Maybe a theater, something like we used to have in Harvard, like a state theater where you'd have a show and maybe a movie, something like that. And the only other thing I ever bring up is that maybe the off-track betting pot might lose a little money, but that should be considered because you're local and not a place, it's not a place where a gambler could go. And that's about it. All I have to say. Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Yoli? Oh, Yoli, okay. I'm sorry. I thought it was script for a second.
I got it.
Next is George Rowe, by the way.
I'm not particularly in favor of the casino for a number of reasons, but one of the things I want to bring out is that in this area, we see the MGM project to be another project, not casino, but baseball stadium, others that we've all heard about, where it started out as a great idea, and everybody thought this is the answer, you know, there's going to be a lot of income. And then a few months later, you're down the road, oh, we have to change it now. We can't do this. Meanwhile, the town has invested, I don't know much money, but we want to have, I think, very, very careful. To me, someone wasn't, and I'm not saying that anyone here would not be watching out, but someone was not watching where the money was going or where it was coming from. Something was missed. And so my main concern is that every, every step of the way, somebody from our town, something's looking out at Windsor Locks and being very, very careful and very attentive to everything that's going to be done. Who's making money? Who's paying the money? Who's paying for what and what? And is there any guarantee?
Thank you. George Rowe? Next will be Michael Joy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Henry Rowe, the fourth, class of sixty-three. I helped carry books from the elementary school that's now the town office over to the new high school so we could start it. I'm against the casino. I spent three decades teaching public school music. Band directors are like coaches. They like you when you win, and they don't like you when the band loses. I've been dealing with young people my whole career, and I've dealt with professional educators across the state. I've been involved with regional and state music education associations. So I have personal anecdotal knowledge of what happens in towns plainfield. The judge has great information. I have anecdotal. I'm against it. There are two kinds of ideas, good and bad. I have learned you have to be rational and don't let the emotion overcome the intelligence. This is a bad idea. The people with whom I've spoken in areas where they have gambling, other states and here, it has not been long-term good. The effect on the people, the parents and the kids I dealt with for three decades was negative. The promise of short-term monetary gain will not outweigh the human cost that will occur at its long term. I've been in this town since 1950, and this is my hometown. We were proud when I was a young kid that we lived in what was geographically the smallest town in the state, yet it turned out every year Windsor Locks was one of the top ten schools sending kids into college in the sixties. So I have a fondness for this town, and I do not want a negative impact with a glimmer of flash-in-the-pan promise of money and then emotion overriding what the real long-term cost would be. I have a heart for the kids in this town and the parents of the kids in this town. And so I'm adamantly against it, and I think that it's saying I think it's a bad idea. Thank you, Dirk.
Michael Joy is next. You then...
Brad Mann.
Mann.
Hi, I'm Mike Joy, sixty-three Oxford Strife. I'm here since 1989. I am an Oxford employee. I've been working for eighteen years. Started out as a part-time dealer, full-time dealer, floor supervisor, and also business accountant. Many opportunities over the last eighteen years. I'm one of the best companies I've worked by, I have any job in my lifetime, and I can't say nothing better about Oxford, they're very good to employees, and the opportunities and people get moved up and taken from departments and move up. So if there's a chance for a town like Windsor Locks to put some jobs in here, there's not a doubt, put some jobs. And if casinos are to stay, they're making money, look at yourself. Casinos are making money, and they'll be making money for Windsor Locks. Whatever we work on in negotiations with state and towns, people are going to make money in this town. The casino would be a good thing, it's good for people, it's a chance for people to better themselves. Really is.
Do you think it would be beneficial to try and negotiate for a provision that a percentage of the jobs would be reserved for Windsor Locks residents?
Or at least definitely for Connecticut for sure. I mean, so many other states did the same thing. I think that's useless. You have to be in that state to get a job. Why not say in Connecticut?
It's against the law to require resiliency. Brad Mann next?
And then Mike Scott. I'm Brad Mann, fifty-three, Elisha Parish. This is... I'm sorry, sir. To me, this is exciting. This is democracy in action, and I hope you guys continue this as you grow older, that we have town meetings where everyone can speak. This is great. Thank you for this. Now, I have opposed to using taxpayer money to support the casino. Why do you say? Well, I look at the casino business as a pie, and this pie is being divided by Connecticut and all the other states, and they're dividing it up to see what slice they're going to get. Windsor Locks, or this proposal by the casino, is offering a small piece of this pie, a very slim piece. The problem is, the pie is shrinking. The overall business is shrinking, so that means this proposal for our slides is going to shrink also. As a business venture, it's not a good idea, as I see it. We are being promised or being led to believe that we're going to get wealth if we agree to a casino, and I don't see that happening based on the business of the casino. We all know what's in the news and what we see. When I first heard of this proposal where it was offered by the casinos, my mind went to the scam that you hear of, where you get a call and say, "You just won the Lotto. All you have to do is step me some money." But after saying all that, I really feel the voters should decide whether or not we go far with this. We should not make that assumption. And just one comment, I keep hearing about approving Route 75, and in my mind, that Route 75 is really being supported by the airport. If we want to improve that area, we might want to look at the airport to give us money to help support it if that's really important. But anyway, thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks, sir. Next up? Next is John White.
Mike Scott, fourteen Third Street, Connecticut, Carver, Local Forty-three, and I've lived here for the last twelve years, and I moved to this town because of the low property cap. here for the last twelve years and I moved to this town because of the low property tax. Maybe casino would help that, sustain that, and keep all this working. Thank you.
John White. Next is Ben.
John White, forty-seven, Bearwood Street, Windsor Locks. I've been a construction worker for thirty years. We've been building those casinos down there for the last twenty-some odd years. I see development around the casinos, the surrounding areas being built up greatly in the last twenty-some odd years. I hear a lot of people talking about there's a crime and I think that maybe we should look into those towns and, you know, they must project their crime rates since, you know, their casinos have been open and then be able to inform us what's, you know, what actually happens around those casinos. But as the president of IGW Local thirty-five, Parker, I know that, you know, one of the things we should be looking for is that we put into, if we do get to the point where we're going to build this casino, is residency rates on the agreement to bill because that I know we can do. Thank you.
Next up would be Paul Harrington.
I live at Seven Pearl, lived here most of my life. I guess I'm for the casino, but I really want to see what the property tax thing is probably the biggest thing for me. What's it going to bring to this town? And I guess too, what's it going to bring? I mean, we can pretty much figure that out because we have a bill to bill that number and hopefully there's going to be some more money coming up on Route seventy-five too. I don't know if that's true or not, but the jobs there, the gentleman's local works there, I think that's another factor, the jobs at the casino are better than working at McDonald's. Not that that's a bad job, but, um, for it, thank you very much.
And Mr. Paul would be next.
Casino's a bad idea. First and foremost, I'm completely against it, but you know, this meeting is not about that, it's about what are we looking for in the negotiation? So because of the actions that the board took, we're in a negotiation phase, we're going to move that forward. Here's the summary of the agreement that Mohegan Sun made with the town of Revere, Mass. And it started at year one through year three, twenty-five billion dollar payout. Year four through six is twenty-eight million and year seven and higher is thirty million. Beyond that, what they've done is two million dollars additional to the police department, two million dollars additional to the fire department, one billion, one million dollars to the public schools and one million dollars to the general municipal fund. Right there is where the negotiation needs to begin. If we're going to get negotiations, we're talking about what are they going to do? I think these are the numbers that we need to start with. These are the millions of dollars that we need to start with. We're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. We need to talk about twenty-five million dollars that they're possibly, or they should give to this town. We shouldn't enter into any agreement. Beyond that, one of the areas that we should look for, forget we need the agreement, construction jobs, only ten percent of the residents that live in Revere. Is that what we're looking for? That's what Mohegan said. Permanent jobs, only twenty percent of Revere, Revere residents were getting jobs at this new casino. I don't think that's what we're looking for, but these are the numbers that we need to at least start with because we're going to go into this negotiation phase. But again, I'm completely against this casino. I don't think we need this town. Thank you.
Michael Rowe. Next.
Good evening, everyone. Carl Schizzle, ninety-three Raymond Road. I served in the legislature for twelve years from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen ninety-eight. I was there when Mr. Ron Perry offered up his land to have the tele theater built and it was overwhelmingly approved by the voters of Windsor Locks. I was there when Governor Whiteyer brought casino gambling to the state of Connecticut, when he worked with the tribes to build the casinos in the state of Connecticut. The MGM project is a go. Ladies and gentlemen, we have legalized gambling in Connecticut. The question is, I think to the point of the hearing, what's in it for the town of Windsor Locks? And so I wanted to offer some suggestions to the board, some of which have already been mentioned tonight, but if you'll allow me, I'll run through my list. First, the personal property and the real property at that casino should be subject to local tax. Right now, that land is tax exempt, it's state property. The town doesn't collect a tax on it. They get a pilot payment that increasingly drops every year because the legislature doesn't fund it. So if a casino goes at gravity, the town of Windsor Locks must be able to tax the personal and real property in that casino. Second, think about things Windsor Locks needs. I think a transit or a shuttle system that would run from the railroad station to downtown to that outlet mall that we hope gets built over the south end of town to the airport isn't a bad idea. And why can't that be an element of the development agreement between the partnership of the town of Windsor Locks? Third, this is about the money. So why not ask for a percentage of the gross? Why can't a piece of the action come to Windsor Locks to help subsidize and fund our schools and local government? You won't get it unless you ask for it and that's one of the principles of negotiating. So the possibility of mutual aid, the impact of our police on our police department, on our fire department, on our infrastructure, all that stuff needs to be addressed in this agreement. There are already mutual aid agreements in place between the four towns around the airport and the airport. When you introduce a new player, a casino run by a well-established, globally valid partnership, it does, it does raise the question of what happens if there's a fire up there or some sorts of public safety problem and they need to draw on Windsor Locks' resources in order to address that need. That should not be done at the expense of the taxpayers of Windsor Locks. Fifth, for years, we've been talking about redeveloping Main Street and moving the train station back to downtown Windsor Locks. Why can't the partnership help us realize that dream by helping us subsidize economic development on Main Street? Again, if you don't ask, you won't receive. Next, an issue that's near and dear to my heart, Mr. Shea actually mentioned it, riverfront development and open space preservation. We've got a fabulous river running along the town border. We've got some great open space on the south end of town. Asking the partnership to subsidize the preservation of open space in town to maintain our quality of life and it's little things like fencing, maintaining paths, parking lots and gates, all that stuff costs us money. Why don't we ask them to help subsidize the quality of life in our town? Seven, infrastructure traffic improvements. No reason why a casino at Bradley Airport has to impact traffic patterns within the town of Windsor Locks. They have done great work in other parts of the city with their casinos, building the roads and accessways necessary to get people to and from the casino. So I would hope if the casino were located at Bradley Airport, we could engineer and work around these traffic issues. And then finally, I think that in the agreement, or at least as we structure the finances of the agreement, there should be, and I'll use the term guarantee, but there should be some provision that makes this cost neutral to Windsor Locks. The taxpayers of Windsor Locks should not have to subsidize any element of this project. And I think going into the negotiation, it would be important to make that one of your key points. If this thing happens at Bradley Airport, it shouldn't cost us anything, but it should be a great benefit to us. I know I'm over time. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Michael Rowe. And then Kevin Motters.
Mike Baril, two fifty Main Street, Windsor Locks. I tell you, it's always tough to follow Carl Schizzle, but I just, I can come here prepared. I don't have notes, but I just want to try to throw some, some common sense out here. This casino is coming to north central Connecticut, okay? Whether we like it or not. And my point is, I'm just a small businessman. I'm pro-business. I want to see jobs, construction, full-time, part-time, but I don't want it to cost the people of Windsor Locks like Carl mentioned, okay? I have enough faith in our elected officials that, like Carl mentioned, a percentage, I think, is the key. If we can get a percentage of X amount of dollars that go to our education system, go to our school system, go to our police and fire department, where it's not costing us more taxpayer money, then I would like to see our elected town officials do whatever, squeeze the casinos for every penny you can get, period, end of conversation. So, that's all I got.
Kevin Motters. Mr. Bracken, I'm going to tell you something right now, that is an apartment on the second floor and that's where Mr. Baril lives.
I'm Kevin Motters. I live on eleven Ninety-Rose, Windsor Locks. I've lived in Windsor Locks for a long time. When I was a boy scout of Windsor Locks, I remember the trip down Main Street. They tore Main Street apart, they promised us, in grace, oh, that Main Street was going to be rebuilt bigger and better and greater. That never happened. I, I was on the committee and I tried to help out for the train museum, for the train station, that didn't materialize. Now it seems like the train museum, but the train station's coming back. I fully support the casino. The reason I do, I'm on Local four-eight-one, we're doing a lot, a lot of work in the state. We built casinos in Stoneford. They're beautiful. I've been to Springfield, I just went up last weekend to see where the casinos are going to be in Springfield. Springfield's a dump. Where they want to put that casino in Springfield, I wouldn't feel safe to park my car. I wouldn't want to walk to the casino from any place in Springfield. If you were to put a casino up at the airport, it would be a class act. Mr. Schizzle and Mr. Baril said the same things I was thinking. The Montgomery Building sitting there doing nothing. I spoke to Chris on his campaign trail and I said, Chris, didn't you mention they had hydroelectric power in the basement of Montgomery's and you're looking for a state grant to maybe convert the hydroelectric power and provide power towards all the schools in Windsor Locks? Well, why don't we ask the Indians if they could help subsidize the hydroelectric power in Montgomery Building? What if they couldn't have a restaurant leased to the Indians? And the top floor of Montgomery Building overlooking the river? You know, we could maybe negotiate something like that, help them out with the train, train stop? Okay, thank you very much.
Richard. Yes, Richard. Yes. And then Bill Grant.
Hello, Richie Stokes, South Hill Street. Yeah, I'm from Local thirty-five. We got local unions and classes on the map and two electrical wards. I think it's a plus for the town. The town may have a grocery store, maybe get a grocery store or something, you know. You have more jobs around, because I've been employed for a while and create more jobs for me, my job is. And, you know, stuff, you know, unemployment, no extensions, go through savings and stuff, but it's definitely a plus for town. Thank you.
Bill Grant. And then last, Mrs. Lou McGonigal.
My name is William Grant, been a resident, currently a twenty-one Mainway. Been a resident of Windsor Locks for the past thirty-six years. I'm a union electrician and a proud member of IGW Local thirty-five. As an electrician, I've worked at both Mohegan Sun and Foxwoods casinos. I've had the opportunity to see firsthand the positive impacts these establishments have had on their communities. These jobs and union jobs has allowed me to remain in this town, to buy home in the town I grew up in, help raise family five, for thought of for poverty, and hopefully two boys have followed. I've also seen a Windsor Locks before I adopted myself, my brothers and sisters in the trade, and many other community fathers and mothers who desperately need it. Simply stated, I support this idea and hope you will give it the consideration it deserves. Given the opportunity of opening a town in Windsor Locks, I consider the many positive attributes of casinos developed here, as pointed out by Ms. Paganis, there's Mr. John Whiteyer, Mr. Carl Schizzle, among many others. Simply stated, I'm for it and I'd like to see some of the ideas mentioned by both members.
Thank you, sir. Adam, you have the honor of having the last word tonight.
Hi, my name is Lou McGonigal. I live at fifty-three Glitteridge Drive. Moved here about seven months ago and I live about three miles from the airport. I'm concerned about the safety issues and the property upkeep around casinos. How will you handle security for everyone outside the casino area? How will you handle the upkeep of property outside the casino area? Will you take on the ongoing responsibility of upkeep and safety issues to ensure that areas near and far do not turn out like, say, the casinos in Atlantic City? Where buildings are run down, there's trash everywhere, there are the homeless on the roads, and the areas are not safe. Regarding the, the jobs, sadly, more and more businesses are keeping the hours to a very minimum so they don't have to pay benefits. So I don't see these jobs coming into the area as a plus because they're not going to have the hours required to raise a family. And these are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.